To call the meeting to order of the Board of Trustees of the Spokane Public Library for Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I'll start by reading our land acknowledgement. All of Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chawila Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this land. All right, visitors, there's a sign-in sheet, as Andrew mentioned, and if anybody would like to sign up for public comment, you can also do that. All right, we have a proposed agenda. Are there any changes or shall we adopt it as presented? Hearing no changes, we'll proceed with the agenda. All right, approval of the October two thousand and twenty board minutes.
I move that we approve the October twenty-two board meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And next, we have approval of the October two thousand and twenty-two bills and contributions.
I move we approve the October twenty-two bills and contributions in the amount of one million five, both five, seven ninety-four, and ninety-seven cents.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And next, we have the financial report in the poll.
Thank you very much. I think so for library operations for October of two thousand and twenty-two. With our cash and investments trend, we closed October with a billion to pay one hundred and sixty-nine days worth of operating costs. We do have available cash and investment balance that does include reserve for capital of about three hundred and forty thousand in net of encumbrance, currently at six million, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. For our expenditure trend, as of October close, we've spent and incurred a total of sixty-eight percent of our annual expenditure budget. That is just shy of eight million dollars. For October spending, that amount was seven hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven. Of that amount, seventy-five percent was for personnel cost. We also had interfund charges, which will include fourth quarter accounting charges, sorry. That total for air funds was seventeen thousand, eight hundred and four. We did spend fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars on capital books and materials. And we also had a total of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six for utilities. And on business office news, our accountant, Minnie Huang, she's been working closely and traveling to all of our locations to perform the annual inventory audit, as well as place new F R I D sites on many of our assets. This maintains our compliance and complete industry practice. But that opens for any questions before we move on to any of the bonds.
Any questions for Nicole? No. All right, thank you Nicole. Thanks Nicole. Penny?
Okay, I'm going to lead off with a couple of purchase orders that we issued under the special authority. One was to Leonie and Keeble in the amount of seventy-four thousand dollars. That was including tax. And this, this is for some items that we knew were coming. The installation of the, the air conditioning unit in the A V room, and also the outdoor book drop, and a little bit of carpentry work. The second was to Garko Construction for seventy-three thousand. And that was to cover the, the, the air conditioning unit also, as well as some ADA door operators, and a sink drain problem that surfaced after we opened due to some as-built errors of the old, of the old building. So I thought this would be a good time to take a look at our budgets. These are our four branches that do not have operating contracts any longer. But you'll still see that we have some construction budget available in each. So we'll continue to use that to take care of any other issues that surface. Got a little bit of furniture and shelving budgets left, though those are winding down. Now, if we take a look at the three areas where we have active construction contracts, that's at Central, South Hill, and Indian Trail. And we're at the point in these projects where I've been able to go through and take the other capitalized cost budgets, consultant services, and the contingency, because those are no longer needing to, to be in those spots. And I moved that up to building construction. So a little later in the agenda, we'll ask the board to increase our construction contract not to exceed amounts, so we can expend these budgets. Any questions?
Um, just refresh my memory, that book drop is also at Liberty Park?
It is at Liberty Park, yes. There's one, Mary, there's one also that will be put at South Hill.
That's what I was remembering, so. Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions for Penny? All right, thank you Penny. Now we have the bond construction project update with Hill International. Corinne, is that you?
That is me. So, evening everybody. As Penny talked about, we're doing some miscellaneous items at Liberty and Hive and, and Shadle. So we're kind of helping Penny with those, keeping track of them and, and processing pay-ups and, and that kind of thing. And there is still a few pieces of furniture that are showing up for some of the branches and some shelving issues, and we're, so we're just helping follow up on those and close out. And for the Central contract, you know, they're finishing up. There's, there's just a few base scope issues, some of them that, you know, they were waiting for equipment that has come in later, and some changes, so we're just wrapping those up and should have most of those wrapped up by January and hope to close out the contract on Central early next year. And then Indian Trail and South Hill are ongoing. We are on our downhill slope, or we're, we're getting close to the finish on both of those, but, you know, have, as is expected with the remodel, have ran into some issues and they're still investigating some things, but, you know, all in all, we're, we're getting, getting ready to close those out and, you know, in December and early January, both of those projects will be done with their construction contract. And then we just need to move all the furniture in and that kind of stuff. So all that is ongoing, but I think all in all, they're going pretty well. Any questions?
This is a question probably not for you, but for Andrew. Do we, what about books and materials and those, have those all been purchased in all?
There's still budget capacity for those, so I believe that those have been ordered, just not delivered for South Hill and Indian Trail.
Okay.
So we'll be working on those and filling up the shelves as.
But the, and the other finished ones.
I can help with that answer, Andrew. And so we had two million dollar books and material budget in the bond. And it, it basically buys it into the library system as a whole, the circulation system. And right now of that two million, we have four hundred and thirteen thousand remaining. So Rob continues to, to pick away at that.
Then it was going a little slower because of the issues putting them into the system, is that?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, we faced a couple of different issues. One, just to slow down with publishing and printing through the pandemic. And then most recently with Baker and Taylor and their ransomware attack. And then obviously with our switch over to in-house processing, that has slowed things down a little bit. But we're getting through and, and we're, we're learning our better processes and we don't foresee any issue in expending those dollars.
Yeah, and we still have plenty left over to purchase more.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind too that that is also used for digital materials. Sure, yeah, well, all materials, yeah, yeah.
I know that, I know we've talked about this, but what's the estimated time for opening South Hill and, and Indian Trail?
Quarter one next year. We're probably looking at late January, early February for Indian Trail, late February, early March for South Hill.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the construction, the bonds? No, I don't. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Corinne and Penny and Andrew for answering those questions. All right, next we have the chairman's report. And I do have a brief report. I just wanted to let everybody know that we had a great response to our request for applications for the trustee position. And we received around twenty applications, give or take. We interviewed twelve and have sent three candidate names over to the mayor for consideration for the appointment. So that process is done from our perspective and, and just wants to work through the process on the mayor's and the city council side for the finalizing. All right, and next we have the library executive director's report.
All right, I do have a submitted report. I did want to start off by thanking both Laura and Mary for participating in those interviews. It was fun. I felt to meet a lot of different community members that are interested in supporting the library system in serving on the board. So thank you for your time. Thank you for reviewing the applications and meeting everyone with me. So I think we found some good candidates to pass along to the mayor and council.
Yep.
Another good news. It's another month, and the Hive won two more awards for the building, so that's a total of seven. They won the International Interior Design Association's Best Public Building Award for the Northern Pacific Chapter and a Seattle A I A merit award. So that's pretty fantastic. And Amanda had just sent over pics from Library Journal. Where both Liberty Park and Central were featured pictures as part of their architectural showcase. So that was pretty cool. I was also invited to attend and participate in the West Central Development Project. This is a group that's organizing and trying to spark conversation around a community effort to revitalize parts in, in the West Central neighborhood. So I've been at those meetings. They've been working with this dialogue or framework put out by the Art Town Foundation. If you've seen the TV show on HBO Max, Art Towns is a, it's an article featured in the Atlantic. And they go around the country and look at different characteristics of what makes a city vital. And one of those things that have been identified, it won't surprise anyone in this room, but is the library. So what role could the library play in a redevelopment effort for West Central? So right now, I'm just at very high level conversations and just listening to the, the community as they're coming in as well. So just wanted to make the board aware of that. If you've taken a look at our programming schedule, continues to offer a really great wide array of options for the public. I included some of the, the highlights that we featured recently. One, the history of the Spokane Tribe. Another, Getting Real About Homelessness in Spokane. Another Community Mosaic Sculpture Tile Making Workshop, Bollywood Dancing, and an artist market at the Hive that was really popular a couple of weekends ago that featured the market with thirty-three different artists where folks could come and purchase their creations at a good price. We continue with our D E I efforts. Our next book discussion for staff will be Mediocre, The Dangerous Legacy of White Male America. So we'll be doing that in December. We've also increased our video offerings via our Canopy streaming service by subscribing to four new packages that don't count against a user's monthly boiling limits. So this will be in addition to the eight that we currently allow each month. And as you'll recall, we also had our annual staff day last month. According to our survey, it was a really great success. We recognize Christina Cowitz, Ming Cooley, Minnie Huang, Joey Malloy, and Angela Richardson as our star employees. Ashley Locke as employee of the year. You'll recall Ashley's been a star employee a couple of times that we've mentioned here. And our team of the year went through our folio team. Have been quite busy this year in both implementation, bug fixing, problem solving. This is a cross-functional team throughout the system, and that consisted of Rob Bruce, Dana Dalrymple, Ashley Locke, Joey Malloy, and Gordon Goldner. So we wanted to thank them and recognize them here in this space as well for their efforts for the past year. And I also thought it was worth noting that we also celebrated our, our years of service, and that included four staff members who have worked for the library for more than thirty years, or reaching that thirty-year mark. So congrats to all. We really appreciate the dedication for everyone that has really brought our mission forward. And then our star spotlight for October went to Jamie Lawson for her excellent customer service efforts. She's a a staff member that works at our Liberty Park branch. And we also welcomed three new staff members, Ashley Olive, Jordan Larkin, Rachel Sullivan, and Marilyn Myers. So welcomes all the new staff. And a couple of things of note, you'll notice as you will walk in, we started offering friends of the bookstore, friends of the library bookstore materials at our locations. So they have gondolas set up at our locations where folks can purchase books by either dropping cash in a box or using a QR code. Shadle Library in the first week, which was first week in November, actually brought in a hundred and twenty-one dollars to the friends, which they were very pleased with. So that's been a, a good thing, and you know, those dollars go right back to our services. So it's, it's, it's a good effort on, on everyone's part. And finally, the mayor submitted the proposed budget to city council at the beginning of November with little surprise on our end. There's a couple of internal things that Nicole is working on with interfund charges. But it's very close to, to what we had submitted for board approval. So we're feeling pretty confident with that moving forward. Now it'll be in the city's council's hand for their adoption, hopefully in mid-December. Any questions for me?
Are there any more open positions that we're hiring?
Staff positions open?
As of this. We're getting prepared.
There'll be some clerical, because it's customer service positions.
What, what is the folio team? What is, what do they do?
So that's our catalog team, basically. So we had switched over to that open source format December twelfth of last year. And they have, we're the first library, public library in the country to implement this. It hasn't been problem-free, if you've ever talked to a staff member about it. But the team, the team has shown a great amount of dedication and perseverance, quite frankly, in getting it to a point where it is today, and it's just going to continue to improve. I think I had mentioned last month, Library Congress is also adapting folio as their system, and they're pouring ten million dollars grant money and working with Ingram in developing it as well. So we're going to be in good hands with that sort of teamwork that we can bring forth with Library Congress's partnership.
And the other question I had, I know when we started, you first acquired Canopy, we weren't sure how what the usage would be. What have we learned about that?
Yeah, I, I feel like it's been a pretty steady usage for us. Do you have any other insight? Okay, we can get you some stats and, and kind of get you some usage. It's a really easy-to-use system. We know that. And we like it because it does allow us to offer things, a really diverse collection to the public.
Excellent. Any other questions for Andrew? All right, thank you, Andrew. All right, so next on our agenda is the council liaison report. Is council member Bingle with us today? Looks like he is not, so we will move on to the communications report. Amanda?
Hello.
Hello.
So, um, so as, a lot of this is repetition from what Andrew says, as it often is, but we hosted a very successful staff day. We had great feedback. I think the biggest piece of feedback is that staff would like to have a whole day. And so just keep that in the back of your minds for next year. Every staff member received a new hoodie sweatshirt, and that's been really nice. You know, we bought t-shirts in the past for staff kind of uniform type pieces, but of course it's getting colder and it's just been so great to see everybody wearing this kind of unified look sweatshirt. We've got a couple of samples in the back if you take a look at them.
And it was freezing on staff day, so.
The marketing team traveled to Indianapolis back just last week, or week before, to present at the library marketing conference. I presented on building your own library website in-house, Leslie Knope style, because of course we were in Indiana, and so I used a lot of Leslie Knope kits for Parks and Rec if you're not familiar with the show. And Skylar and Alina presented in partnership with West Vancouver Public Library on beating the algorithm and controlling your own narrative and using email marketing to reach your, your customers rather than relying on Facebook, Instagram to, you know, present your information. So speaking of email marketing, we increased our email marketing to every single week, and so we're doing an email newsletter bi-weekly like we were, and we've added an events newsletter every other week. So we're promoting events more now that we're back on a normal, doing a lot more events. And so that has had a direct impact on website traffic. We saw a hundred and fifty-three percent increase on website traffic after we started doing that. So it's just a really tangible example of what we presented on at the library marketing conference of, you know, sending the emails directly to customers, drives people to your website, and then eventually to your events as well. Speaking of successful events, Andrew mentioned the Hive Thirty Free Artist Market. That was an event that we had at the artist, at the Hive, where artists who were Hive, Hive artists and also artists from the community brought their ware, gave demonstrations, and also sold some of their pieces there. More than five hundred people came to that event, and as a direct result of all of the email marketing, and also Alina appeared on like eight AM or seven AM live television to talk about that event too. So the community is really interested in those types of events, and I'm looking forward to seeing more of them in the future. On our social media front, we had a really successful month on social media with a, a grading event. We've been doing these, uh, upscale your grading skills events where people can learn how to grade. And we had over thirteen thousand impressions on that event on Facebook and also on Instagram. It was extremely popular. And every year our haunted walking tour posts get, you know, tons of clicks on them. We, we wrote that a couple of years ago, I think during the pandemic, it's something you could go out and do socially distanced. But every single year, it continues to get lots of, lots of interest on it. The media covers it again, and people want to get out and see what haunted, haunted sites we have in Spokane. And then finally, I'll just touch on the, the earned media that we had for the month. Like I mentioned, we have the Thirty Free Artist Market coverage on KHQ. And then the Lilac City Live was featured on Hit Go Y for our haunted edition of Lilac City Live. And we had coverage on the Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration or observation that we did, and also coverage about our Kimberg living event about the library.
All right.
My report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, now we have a new business, the two thousand and eighteen UTGO Library Capital Bond Fund, Meridian Construction Contract Not to Exceed Amount. Penny?
Thank you. Yes, this, this action is a request to the board to lift our not to exceed amount. That contract was awarded to Meridian in February of this year. And that was for a not to exceed amount of six point six million to cover both the renovation of Indian Trail and South Hill. Right now, we have a hundred and five thousand left in that not to exceed amount at South Hill. And I've got a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars worth of additional costs coming that I'm aware of. At Indian Trail, we've got two hundred and three thousand remaining of that not to exceed. And I am aware of ninety-nine thousand at Indian Trail. Also, a new hydro, hydronic piping problem surfaced there last Thursday. Where we don't, we're in the process of going through the investigation efforts. It will add some cost, but not, not as severe as what we encountered at South Hill that we talked about last month that was very expensive, the hundred and eighty thousand. So earlier in the, in the, my update, I talked about moving other capitalized cost budgets and consulting services and contingency up to our construction line. So my request to the board is to increase our, lift that not to exceed amount for that difference, so we could fully utilize that construction budget if we need it. I think we're going to need it at South Hill. We might have a little bit left at Indian Trail, but again, this, this was just Thursday when this piping issue surfaced. So with that, our request is to lift that not to exceed amount for a combined rounded total of three hundred and fifty-one thousand for the Meridian contract.
Right, any questions for Penny?
Well, we, we no longer need that, that money and the other line items where they were.
No, Jim, those were, were well into the projects. We're on our downhill slope, so those type of services have all been taken care of. And, and also note that when Group Four developed the construction budgets, they didn't actually say a certain dollar amount for consultants and a certain amount for other capitalized costs. We did that internally so we could track, for instance, a professional, a legal expense or a permit fee. So they were all, always considered a construction budget type cost.
All right, do we have a motion? I move to approve the increase the Meridian Construction Combined Not to Exceed Amount for South Hill and Indian Trail from oh goodness, six million, six hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars to six million, nine hundred and sixty-two, five hundred and fifty-six, an increase of three hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And now we have the Walker Construction Not to Exceed Amount.
Okay, this is, this is the exact same. Oops, did we have a question? Okay, so this is the same type of action where our Walker Construction contract is within a hundred and seventeen thousand of hitting the not to exceed amount. Currently aware of about sixty thousand dollars that will, that will be incurring, plus we've got a couple of issues that we're investigating that with toilets, so that, that needs to be taken a look at, and then perhaps we'll have some additional costs with that. So we do have a room, two hundred and ten thousand dollars left in this budget, and I'm asking the board to please lift that not to exceed amount by the rounded amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Is this for Central?
Yes. Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes.
Thank you both.
Bet, thank you.
Thanks Penny.
And now we have an information session on this Shadle. And now we have uh an information session on this Shadle Discovery Garden and Programming. Jinjin?
So, tell me, I'll go. Where do I stand? I've never done this before.
Yeah. Where, where, where are you gonna be comfortable?
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, my name is Jinjin, and I'm a community. One of the things that I produce that I'm working for in my area of enterprise and awareness and fellow. So since tonight's time is rather limited, I'm just focused on one story. And this story has given about sixty percent of what I have delivered in person programs this is able to. So, this story is about the creation of this garden and how we center this thing around. So anyway, the seed of this garden was planted in twenty fifteen. Okay. In twenty fifteen, at that time, John Emerson from Growing Neighbors approached the library and proposed that we from the corner of the lawn piece at the corner of Belt and weather sleeve into a community garden. At that time, the library was not ready. But fast forward to twenty eighteen, when the, with the passage of the launch, and the library was um, you know, upcoming with the impending renovation, we revisited that topic. And at that point, Paul Shadon was the branch manager for Shadle, and he saw the vision, and we decided that this is the time. So and I here I want to thank the library leadership for their innovative support for this program. So with that support, under the community's support, we worked that garden into building of the new library. So then fast forward again to this year in February, the garden was here. Now what? The library did not open uh for public in-person program until April. So we were itching, were ready to go. So once again, partner with Growing Neighbors, and we had a few different programs, I called it under the table, all programmed by proxy, which means that we were partners, but they were company based. They delivered the programs. We did all the support behind this. So we did earn quite a few of them beginning from the end of February. And we set up the little nursery right here, back part of the start to be right here. So that, however, we started in February. When our first in-person program here started in April, I was quite apprehensive because um of the attendance, but it did not look like I needed it for it. So our first program was by Kyle Merritt of City, why uh Skopan City Waterways Program. And we were able to start here and quickly move on to the garden. Um, into the garden for some hands-on demonstration, demonstration there, and our first uh, uh first program took place in the garden right there in April, and was very well attended. Twenty-six people with people coming from Idaho as well, so we were very pleased. So we mentioned earlier about the community support. All the from Downriver neighborhood council was solely behind this project. So very early on, the farmers did everything to help us, and they're here. So our center bed here is the coordinator's garden that was paid for, not only paid for by them, they also helped us quickly plant the garden, and this is in May. Now, up with the garden in place, we reached out to the Skopan County Master Gardeners Program, and we started working with a plant clinic. So in May, our first plant clinic took place in the lobby of this library. This is representative of this plant clinic. It's central to the theme here. Not only provide so much value for our patrons, it also provide value to our partners here, that they can provide the platform for the clinic, for the outreach, it also provides a lot of opportunities for the master gardeners to volunteer. And we were now concerned that nobody would want to work there, so they would now go to the conference on the plant clinic uh by the fairground. But as soon as the final she went out within the week, the entire year was done. And so with that, we had to add uh manpower, and so they went from four volunteers to three volunteers. Yeah, it could not satisfy their needs, so we went from three to four. So very quickly, this is our first clinic, and again, I was worried nobody would come, but at eleven o'clock sharp, there is. So with um we noticed very quickly that the common, community was actually quickly forming around the core of this plant clinic, because a lot of these visitors were actually reaching to the him, they ask questions, they order samples, and they stay off. And then again, in a couple of weeks, they return with more samples. So we noticed that people really enjoy coming over here to talk and visit. So it's very nice to see a community quickly forming around the core, around this core program. So with that sense of mind, we reached out to those open any master and also the East Coast. And since they are of the same genus, actually, we decided to put them together at the same time and the same way. So they're suckers and kind of rub off each other and looking at us. Everybody speaks to them, so. So the next thing that we worked on is a gathering class. And this is, if you all know about the Inner Environment Club, that is the region's most dominant, biggest uh, the most influential garden club. And this is actually a club that I quoted before the Shadle Library went into renovation back in, you know, talking to them and say, hey, we're going to have great meeting room space. If you have any needs and whatnot. And in April, they came to us and said, oh, we need a meeting room space in a hurry. And so when they are, they moved in right in April. And it, this, every month, they meet here right in this room, and the attendance is, they're always around seventy-five to ninety, close to a hundred people every, every month, one of its touch, every time. And this is their, their last meeting a couple of weeks ago. I counted eighty-six people. I'm pretty sure we're going to have to break down the wall. So in June, once again, growing neighbors, people are saying, we would like, now that we have a garden, and it's growing, it looks really nice, we would like to offer tours. And so we worked together, and we started opening up the garden for young um, for this kid. This is Sky Pop's summer campus. And a family chief by health, this summer had a pre-summer program. And so every Thursday from the end of June throughout August, every Thursday, we were running uh garden tours, open house for the product as well as this thing. And we saw a lot of kids. Some very nice pictures here. We also reached out to the master gardeners and invited, invited them to join us in the garden to show the details in more, in our personal level, what these plants are. And their kids did learn because of all of these great companies are really good at this. And I see them one week and I see them a couple of weeks later, and when I recognize them, I actually believe them. And they were able to, so we knew they were learning. So there's all the fun, we're getting fresh produce. Uh, anybody who don't know what they're. Okay, this is actually a hands-on teaching program run by the Skopan County Information District. The all those veterans and opportunity free of charge to learn how to farm before they decide to go and fund themselves. And um, so we met them in twenty nineteen, and of course, we were disrupted by the pandemic, but we were, you know, to see them return. Can you see the laughter? So they were extremely popular and welcomed. Every time they were here and they set up their stand here, once the season started, I hear they, once a week, and every time they're here, they will have forty-five to fifty visits, including families. So I think you can see both animals jumping. Yeah, so. So the guy there, the great, his name is Jeff, and in talking to him, I discovered that he liked to cook. And I like to cook. So in talking, we decided, we decided, oh, why don't we start a summer cooking series? We were not planning to offer a summer cooking series. We were quite focused on the garden itself, but in talking, it seems like a no win. So on the table, summer cooking series was born. It's just me, me going there, talking to him, and we decided to just do it right by the door, capture what the in traffic itself. So we took that idea into this garden because it was always our vision to have this garden to grow, grow the produce and take it and do the demo right there. So we decided to extend the idea to the day campus. And those are the green onions that we were growing right on that bed. So we were able to turn around, probably sit right there and show the kids how to use them. So I think um, we just found out into our open house, clear out as well, and this is one of our examples. So as season end, this was like uh middle September, and it was part of the Growing Neighbors tour of the neighborhood gardens. The tour ended here, right here in this room, right at this garden. We decided to go and party here. I always decided we're going home cooking shops. Okay, um, during that time, we were able to take whatever that was in the garden and make food right here. And I said, this was a vision fulfilled in one season, because as I said earlier, it was always the vision to be able to go out to the garden, get whatever's there, and show people how to make them. Here's in here one row, she's the instructor of uh the culinary instructor of new tech culinary program. And she's making a great salad, using all the ingredients from the garden. I almost said that when you know how to pour the onion to make your great salad, make sure you pour it with a great flourish and flair. That represented to us, right there, that action represents a vision being part of that. This was in October, our last outdoor program right in the garden. Used by, protected by the master composters and recyclers. We made, we were able to not just show people how to do it through PowerPoint presentation, but move on to the garden to do actual physical. The whole, the whole, we had a very much, a quite a few of these people actually come as high as come back. I don't know, come, come all the way. The message is reaching far away. So I keep saying, that was our last program. That was our last program. I have not done yet. Our last program is next month, September tenth, and we're gonna end the family even with a community-wide house plant swap. We've never done this before. We're gonna try it out, and this is the street cooking house plant swap. So maybe if it's successful, next spring we'll do a garden, outdoor plant swap. So we'll see how it plays. This is what we don't want. So something is missing here to me still with the garden as the backbone, with the plant clinic is the central core of this program, with a garden club is anchored here. What is still missing to me is a series called Eastern Coherent Curriculum on How to Garden. And we have that month, if you all know that month, right? So that month will be teaching a whole series of gardening, taking a grower throughout the whole season from seeds to seed, beginning next day. So that's what they look like. So anyways, so at the bottom connection, the first year this garden was held greatly and maintained by our master gardeners vegetable committee. So the next year, we're gonna do something else. The garden is being sewn as a hands-on tool for Pat Mun's series, and we will be progress around her topics. So, but what's gonna happen beyond that? We already have community members approaching us. Filipino community came to us and said, hey, we grow a lot of um tropical vegetables, and you don't. We would like to donate you some seeds. And I said, instead of giving us some seeds, why don't you come over and teach us how to grow tropical vegetables? That will be very new topics for all of us. So that possible in twenty twenty-four. And beyond that, I'm not worried. I'm taking ideas. We can always stick with them. And there is master gardener from very cutting the, putting the tomatoes there. And here is the list of the people that have been helping us with the garden. At the very end is the volunteer master waterer. I call him, he help me water. So do you have any questions?
Joan, it's very impressive. I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Jinjin. What a wonderful program that we've built all around the garden there. I'm.
The taste of the strawberries, they were fantastic.
Yeah, all right. Hopefully I can get on that next year. Yeah, strawberry. That's right. All right. Uh, let's see. Additional agenda items or changes to the agenda? Do we have any? No. Okay. All right. And is there anybody signed up for public comment?
I don't have anyone online.
Okay. All right. No one has signed up here. So uh, our next regular public meeting will be Tuesday, December twentieth at the Central Library. Um, and we are not having an executive session today. So with that, I will call the meeting adjourned.